Rebecca, just confirm before we get started that you can hear me clearly.
Yes, I can.
How about Jeff? Did he communicate it? Can he hear us? Can we hear him?
Yep, I think we're good.
Alright, thanks Jeff. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. City of Anamosa, City Council Agenda, Regular Session, Monday, April 12th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Animals Library Learning Center, also via Zoom. 1.0 Roll Call.
From?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Lucker?
Here.
Zumba?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
All members, all council members present. 2.0 Pledgeable Agreements.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into approval of agenda, I, we have one council member that is joining us Zoom, through Zoom tonight. So again, I'll ask that we conduct roll calls on all decisions, motions. Along with that, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome back Mr. Robert Young from his tour, serving our country. He's recently returned and we are certainly glad to have him back amongst us as a city. Moving on, 3.0 Approval of Agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by John. Is any further discussion needed on the agenda set before us? Beth, you conduct the roll.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zumba?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda carried unanimously. 4.0 Motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting. 4.1, March 22nd, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
I'm gonna take that as Rich's motion and a key second. Is there any discussion on the minutes as submitted? Phil?
Zumba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Lucker?
Yes.
Motion to approve minutes carried unanimously. 5.0 Public Hearings, None. 6.0 Proclamation, None. 7.0 Old Business. 7.1 Discussion and Possible Action on Wayfinding, Signing Contract Award. Gary Blumsman, Jones County Economic Development.
Good evening, everybody. You saw in your packet that we had one bid submission for the wayfinding signage. It was in the hands of at least five different ones for sure because I talked to five different contractors for it. One said they were just too busy, one said it was too big of a project, one didn't get back to me, and then of course, one has, gonna be changing the way they do business for the next little bit, so they weren't for sure when they might be able to be back and doing signage. So this was the only bid we received. And you're familiar with them because they also did the wayfinds, wayfinding signage plan and design force as well, their ASI out of Grinnell. Hey, don't know if we had any questions on it or not.
Other than the sticker shop?
It's actually not as expensive as I thought it would be.
Wow, I missed it.
For as many as signs as we're getting and for as durable as they are, it's actually lower than I thought it would be per sign.
Is there a guarantee on how long it'll hold up?
It's a two-year limited warranty on the signs themselves. Obviously, if they do the installation, there's a warranty on that as well. If they don't do it, there's not one from their perspective. Usually these types of signs, based on the research we've done and found in the past, last about 15, 20 years before they start to maybe fade unless they get, you know, hit by a derecho or something, we can't predict. But for the most part, they last about 15, 20 years.
Is this something that President Industries would be able to bid or not?
They were asked to and because of the recent activities there, they're not for sure when they might be able to start doing signage or anything like this again.
Do we know what the signs are made on? Are they metal?
They're metal and they're heavy. We've got a couple of samples over at the office. I didn't think to bring them for whatever reason, but they're super heavy, Beth could attest to, they're very durable. They're heavier than stop signs, so think about probably two or three times that thickness in terms of what you'd be getting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Real quick question, do you want to approve for all of it or just the fabrication? The council, different times it said they weren't sure if they wanted to have the installation done by someone other than city staff.
Well, but if the city staff installs, did you not say that?
There wouldn't be any warranty on the installation, correct?
Right.
The signs would still be warranted for things that weren't installation, you know, like they were installed wrong and fell. That would not be a warranty issue. But if, you know, something happened that faded, you know, in six weeks or something, then they would be responsible for that.
That part they'd be responsible for.
Yep. I just wanted to clarify so I knew what to tell them.
And the installation, would the installation be readily easy for city staff?
I would assume so. I think they do most of your other signage.
Okay. The only, my only concern is if, you know, there is some damage, it sounds like it potentially could be a big, big old game of finger pointing as far as if the warrant, you know what I mean? If they say it wasn't installed right, we say it was and, you know, that's my only concern on there. Well, if we install it, there's no warranty on the installation anyway, so if it fell, no matter who installed it, if we installed it, it's ours anyway. If they installed it, they would guarantee it for what, two years?
Yep.
So I think for two years worth of time, I'd be willing to take the chance on our city staff. So I'm making the motion then with city staff installation.
13 total signs, am I reading that?
Um, I think there's more.
In all.
It's 14. Yeah, there's 14 total signs and then there's some of the, like the brackets and stuff.
Are they included?
Yep. All, this was an inclusive price. Because even if they don't install them, they've still gotta supply the accouterments that you hook them to.
Post? Everything?
The post, the attachments, yep. All that's included.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Rich. Alan, I imagine you're second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Probably comment?
I wanna give a quick instruction. We have three people who joined on phone, so I wasn't able to send them a message that if you want to speak on any agenda item, you can raise your hand to let me know you'd like to speak by pressing star nine. And that will let me know you'd like to speak.
Thanks for that, Rebecca.
Yep.
There's no other discussion. We have a motion by Rich, second by Alan. Approve the bid as submitted for fabrication only, less installation.
From?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Zumba?
Yeah.
Lucker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion. During unanimous. Thanks, Gary. So I'm appointing to discussion of possible action on ambulance funding request. Eric Briesmeister, Jones County Medical Center. Sierra is with us in house. Is he joined us virtually, Rebecca?
Um, I don't see anything obvious that would be Eric. He could be one of the phones, I suppose, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing him.
Included in the pack, it was some material for us to review.
He presented all this a few weeks back. I think it was more or less we were gonna do our looking as far as what we could do. I don't think he had, this looks exactly, Beth, is this exactly what he presented the last time? Okay. Did you do any figuring as far as, you know, the way we work with the fire department in comparison?
Oh, as far as like the communication contract?
Yeah, I think that's where we kinda left it, if I recall, last time.
Right. So just that our portion is $32,000 next year for the communication contract that does cover the police fire and the ambulance.
And that's total for all three of them or that's each one?
Total for all three. The fire department pays approximately $4,200 of that. The police department generally pays the balance.
Is there discussion with council? Or is there more information you'd like to see? There is a motion to fund in some capacity.
Would it be reasonable for us, Rick, with the $32,000 that we pay for the from the 97, so down our net would be?
Yeah, we're not gonna have them paying the whole thing. I mean, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be right.
Well, but if it's 32 for all three departments, if you divide it by three, it'd be $10,000 for them.
Yeah, the fires only paying 40, 44,000 something.
Well, and the way he's calculating it, we should probably take that off per year because he's using that number to calculate the aggregate for the year, for a number of years.
He's using a three-year, three-year average.
Right.
Um.
Kay, could you move your microphone closer to you?
Sure. We didn't really plan anything. We probably could have looked at it maybe during outside agency funding because it kind of would fall under that. Um, I know he didn't really have an amount that he was settled on after, after our last discussion. I mean, I can just, we can just wait and I can put it back on and see if we can get in here.
Well, you know, the other thing I was looking at and trying to figure out is he's including depreciation into his calculations, even though they don't need to do depreciation because they don't pay tax, but what kind of depreciation schedule are they using to come up with like the 66,000 number? Are they just doing it on a normal five-year basis or are they, are they actually using the tax allocations? Or how are they coming up with those numbers to put that in there? I mean, maybe it should be less if you based it off of tax. So I'm kinda curious about the depreciation portion of this. Did we ask that when he was here? Did he have an answer for that, Rich? Do you remember?
I asked about depreciation and all he said was that they put it in there because it was an expense, but he didn't say anything about what kind of a schedule they're using or how they were calculating it.
It might be a question for their financial person out there. I mean, they would have a little more specifics on it. Maybe we just need to wait till we have that piece of information. I think we should do something. I mean, as he pointed out, we're getting off way cheap compared to Monticello as far as what City of Monticello subsidizes and it's something we wanna promote and have around. Because if any of us need it, we're gonna want it.
We definitely don't want to lose the service. There's, there's no question about that.
Yeah.
So, Beth, do you, did you take that as an action? Alan, did you try to get information that Rich is looking for in the future? Is there, council, is there any other answers that you'd be looking for that we could possibly have a review of this at the next council meeting?
And are you looking to put it in for 2022 or just go get it in for like this year? I think he was asking for 2022, but, oh, okay.
Yeah, he was looking for next year, I thought.
Well, it sounded like it was, it was an ongoing request, not just a one.
Right, but it'd be ongoing after this.
Yeah.
I mean, we would have some leeway then if you, yeah, if we wait till 2022, right? I mean, if you wanted to do say $20,000 or $30,000.
Well, the other question I have, have they asked the county for any money?
That I don't know. And?
You, Mr. Swisher? Would you mind if we ask you, if I ask you a question? I would like you up there.
I am aware of, uh, he's going around asking township trustees for the money. Um, I don't know where the bill sits at the state right now for essential funding for your mess. But I believe he's just getting out ahead of it by asking the township trustee. I do know some of the township trustees have given the money, some have not. Because they're not obligated by law. That's all I know.
Jeff, you're a icon within the community, very well-known. Could you please state your name for the record?
Uh, Jeff Swisher.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did the county do a donation? Did the county do an allotment?
Oh, we did not this year.
Okay. But for 2022?
2022 is something we have to consider, just like you're doing here. You know, fingers crossed, maybe, I know the state is reviewing this every time they seem to be in session. Hopefully they fund it and just my opinion, doesn't have, just my opinion, it should have been funded 50 years ago with the fire department. That's just my opinion. You gotta have an ambulance and you gotta have a fire. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Just out of curiosity, if we're talking to him, I, I know he said it, but I can't, I know we're a lot less, but what Monticello is paying? I'd just be, just for comparison's sake, not for what it's worth, I guess.
You mean for running their own ambulance service?
No, I mean, they get a subsidy from, they get, they get funds from, from the city of Monticello as well, I believe he stated.
No, Monticello runs their own ambulance service. They don't, they don't serve Monticello.
Okay.
Monticello has their own.
He was stating as far as what the city of Monticello has to pay to fund their own service, then, gotcha.
Right, totally different.
Okay. My bad.
Alright, I don't think, we don't need a motion to table this and we certainly have time, obviously, we're looking at the 2022 budget. I will consider 7.2 an open table item till it's before us with the information that has been entrusted. 7.3 Update on Planning for the Downtown Nodes, Shelley Carr, Park and Rec Direct.
Shelley Carr, Parks and Rec. We are just, everything's fine. We're in the process of getting ready to start working on the nodes and the rest of the parks. This weekend next, we'll be working on this, amending a little bit, adding some compost and landscape fabric. We plan to plant some preneals and then fill in with annuals. Preneals will come back next year and they're from the downtown assessment. Guys, the page that came with the downtown assessment that had a list of, we use a bunch of plants from that. They're all mostly drought, sand, and salt resistant. We'll plan to, once we plant them, we plan to put more mulch, keep them weeded, water them, again with the speech department, Shane found a tank that we'll be able to either pull behind, the back of the truck, and then just drive up and down and keep them watered, maintained.
When do you think you'll start planning?
May 14th, the day of hearing with Amy Keltner. We're working with her, so we'll have, between the city staff and the volunteers from the day of hearing, we'll get them planted.
Good deal.
And you're looking to lay down some weed fabric first?
Yeah.
Mulch?
We also purchase some cases of preen, just to kinda keep the weeds that they, between the, the fabric and the preen. It should, it should go well. I'm planning for it to go well.
It will.
I think so.
You're on it.
Sounds like you got a good plan.
Council have any questions? Looking forward to seeing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.4 Discussion of Possible Action on Seasonal Alley Closure Request. Leanna Boone, Animals Chamber of Commerce.
Leanna Boone, um, last time at the meeting, we just got brought up and there were some concerns regarding insurance. I think that's been addressed, but I did, before this goes any further, I want to get together with the building owner and our schedules have not, we've had a couple meetings scheduled and he's had to change those. So I'm just asking that you table this until we can get together and discuss what his concerns are.
Very well. Any questions or comments for Leanna?
I do have one question. You said that the insurance has been, you answered the questions on insurance?
I went to speak to Jackie the next day and she sent an email to Beth and myself about both concerns.
Okay, and what was the answer on that?
Um, just that everything was covered under the city's policy. The only thing that wouldn't be is if for some reason the alley was rented out for something and then you'd have to add an additional insured. And I can forward all that email to all of you.
They have it. They have it. We've also had an email with Jackie that if there's going to be things that aren't owned by the city, by the city in there, the tables and chairs, I don't know who's going to be cleaning or whose insurance it would go under, but there will have to be a second named insured. We only insure the alley, not the, the items in the alley.
So that's a question then that needs to be answered before the next meeting.
Thanks, Leanna, for that update and we look forward to advancing this idea. Thank you. Discussion and poss, 7.5 Discussion of Possible Action on Seasonal Parklet Placement, Leanna Boone, Animals Chamber of Commerce.
Um, actually, I'm gonna ask you to table this too because I didn't know this was gonna be on the agenda and there's a committee that's talking about this and we haven't really got together to decide anything because there's a lot of factors this year with the facade program, um, construction going on. So we're trying to figure out before we present it here, what the best course of action is for this year.
Feedback you got from 2020 was all positive on these parklets?
Everything that I heard, yeah. People enjoyed it. Business owners like to have their space, especially the outdoor space. Most of them made good use of the space and they were always occupied.
I would concur with that. Those businesses that I spoke to were very appreciative that that space was available to them and I know they were also looking forward to the future for them. Council have any questions at this time for Leanna, if she can come back at a future meeting?
I have one question. Are you gonna rotate these parklets or are the same businesses, are you gonna be using them again or how's that going to happen?
Um, I think it, again, it all depends on where the construction's going to be. There's not a whole lot of options, I guess, and we try to stick with people that serve food, so kind of limited there and
Okay.
That's one of the other things that we'll discuss and bring back.
So do you have a list right now of businesses that are interested in having them again?
All I've heard from is, um, well, about three of the ones that had it last year that are really interested in having it again. I can have that list.
Okay.
Okay, we'll consider 7.5 open until Leanna is ready to present before the city again. 7.6 Discussion of Possible Action on Proposals to Purchase City Building Located at 100 East Spur Street. Currently the police station, Craig Joe, Joe Melon, uh, Jor Company.
Good evening. It's Craig Chummeland. Nice attempt on the name. So our proposal was presented last council meeting and as we discussed, there was a desire for the library board to have consideration, conversation on that, and so proposal stands as in the packet, and so we would like to hear a response this evening from council.
The library board met and was approval of the project.
Very good.
If the library board is good with it, I will make the motion, we sell the building to Craig for his proposal.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Jeff, second by Rich, to sell the current police station to Craig Jor Company for price as submitted. Any further discussion from the council?
I look forward to seeing what you can do with that building and get it back up to a presentable building.
We do as well.
It is a very well-built building structural-wise. You know, it certainly helps the young experience, any type of deratio. very well-built building structural-wise, certainly with the young experience, any type of deracial like Cedar Rapids did, let alone any other type of inline bins or twenty eight, that is one building though that I believe would sustain. I just asked the council to give consideration prior to vote, I understand there's a motion on the floor, I get that. And this is not anything against Craig, I very much appreciate him looking to take this on. But if it would, the, we hadn't spent money to maintain this, shame on us for that, whether in council or previous. Although one could look at it as we've got by without an expenditure, so now that it is in front of us to possibly put a roof on and other types of maintenance work that should have been taken care of, that, that price tag gets a little hefty now. And I understand that, and again, shame on us for letting it get to the point it is. Although it is a very solid building with some remodeling, you know, I just think it could be home to Economic Development Director's Office, could be home to the Tourism Director's Office, it could be also home to the Chamber Director's Office. So I, I just want you to give that to some consideration before you send this to the vote. Speaking with Beth on how it is zoned, something very similar to this has occurred in another community and in time and for whatever reason it was sold, it has now become apartments. I would hate to see that building or that structure, again, I don't believe Craig would, would do that. But we just don't know what the future would hold either. That's something else to take into consideration that they're zoning inside of that property. That's my two cents.
Do we want to have some sort of stipulation in the, add some verbiage, not that we should have to worry about this, but if that's a concern?
Well, if I could respond just to that concern as well, that is not the intention whatsoever, the, the greater desire is to create a commercial space that will drive traffic and bring folks to Anamosa to better serve the other businesses within the community. So the intent is to get it to a place that we can have something that's going to bring more traffic and revenue to other like-kind businesses in town.
I think our Mary has a good point, but we also have to look at projects that our city has taken on. We pushed this to the side quite a bit over the years because of that and we have taken on some pretty good sized projects now. And I'm just wondering if, if adding that much more pressure to our financial position is, is, is advisable. I think that Craig, he's moving into our city and I can't imagine anyone wants to, to be a part of the city when, would do something that would be detrimental. It can happen, but I, I'm just going on a gut feeling and ended up talking a little bit after the, the last meeting. I, I, I have faith in, in my own sense, and I could be wrong, but, and excuse me for saying that, Greg, but I, I feel that he would, he would do us justice. That's just my sense and we're not going to be able to do what needs to be done to that building ourselves right now, I don't think. I, I think we need to focus on what we're doing, unfortunately.
Well, I agree with that and then the other aspect I look at is, let's say it is tourism, it's not handicapped accessible, so there's another expense. And is it a building that we as a city are going to utilize and need? Because if it's tourism, they're going to have to rent it from us or they're going to have to buy it anyway. So at this stage, I'm willing to move it on to somebody I know that's going to update it, get it taken care of, spend the money on it that needs to be spent. Because I know like Tourism Chamber, they want to be downtown, they don't want to be off the main street, so.
It's going to go back on the tax roll, tax roll too, I know not what Craig wants to hear, but it is going to go back on the tax roll, so.
Thank you very much.
But I think this is a great opportunity at this point in time.
Okay, well, again, Craig, I, I also have faith that you have the city's best interest as you progress with this project under the assumption that council will pass it very soon. I just wanted you to know that I also am supportive of you in bringing light to this building.
Thank you.
Is there any call, any public comment? I'll start with in-house first.
Was there a question for me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Now I'm just asking if there's any other public comment, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca, anybody virtually?
I am not seeing anything.
Very well, let's move this vote forward then, Jeff.
Yes.
Yeah.
April.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Mockart.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously?
Fantastic.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Eight point zero, new business, eight point one, discussion of possible action on property, proposed development agreement with By Design LLC, Craig Jomellin, By Design LLC.
You are really getting a lot better with that name.
In two weeks, I'll probably be further off than I am tonight, Greg, and I apologize for it.
Oh, that's okay, it's Chummeland, so yes, in your packet you have a proposal that we have put together for TIF consideration on the Bennett Manufacturing Property, the, the key point being that it's graduated and that our intentions will be to continue with the investment that we're placing out there now in equal sum of about three million, but then we'll be doing two expansions and so that's why we kind of graduated that TIF to capture a little bit more at the point that we make the further investment for a paint line and other manufacturing capacity. Any questions?
Beth, you, did I see one of your memos that you and Derek worked side by side with Craig and his team to put this together, this staggered TIF proposal?
Correct.
With that being said, both you and Derek would be behind this?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich, any further council discussion? Public comment in-house? Public comment virtually? Now, please conduct the roll.
April.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Mockart.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
From.
Yes.
Motion to approve, proposed agreement carried unanimously, thank you again, Craig, for being a partner to Anamosa.
Thank you very much, I'm very excited about all of these projects, so thank you again.
Eight point two, project status update from HR Green, Andrew Marsh representing HR Green.
It's actually Josh tonight, so I'll let him introduce himself. Josh, we can't actually hear you. Let me try that again. Yeah, we're still having trouble hearing you, Josh.
Well, maybe it's like Josh is trying to figure some technical difficulties out, does the council have any question regarding what HMR Green has submitted prior? Rebecca, Josh, any luck?
Not so far, I wonder, Josh, if you tried using the computers, built-in microphone, if that would work? Maybe?
Still nothing.
Yeah, still nothing.
Again, maybe in a little bit Josh can work through that, I, I would just assume move forward and come back, you have all of a sudden we see him raising his hand. With that, eight point three, review and approval of plans and specs for fire station addition. Kind of rather, I hope nobody had to print to view because, what would you say, a couple, three hundred pages?
Three hundred pages about, yeah.
Yeah, that's quite a few.
We did just have a meeting with Shy Hattery at four o'clock today, a few little bugs worked out and I think we're good to go. So we should be following that schedule, so we should be planned, or the bid doc should be done by Friday, which is sixteenth. We'll solicit bids until May sixth and then we'll award the project on the May tenth meeting with a public hearing.
More from today. Enter in hopefully to the next phase of this.
Right.
And Chief Shada is fine with everything that's here?
Tim and Jeff were in the meeting today and talked to Shy Hattery and everything looks pretty good.
Okay, looks like you want.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich, any further council discussion? Any public comment in-house? Any public comment virtually? Beth, please.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Mockart.
Yes.
Zumba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
Dow.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously, eight point four, review and approval of engineering agreement with HW Engineering for FEMA Gabion Wall Project and Division Street Bridge.
And Nate, I believe, is online with us. There he is, if you want to unmute him, Rebecca, this, we've been working with FEMA, so the Gabion Wall is the, the, it's the baskets with the rocks in it that's at Fountain Park. It's sustained some damage, it's had quite a bit of erosion, so it really needs to be taken out and rebuilt. Nate actually had done some of our bridge inspections, so he's well-versed on what we have over there now. The Division Street Bridge is also has some pretty severe erosion and it does need to have something done, so we're thinking a box cover, it will be the replacement with some pavement. Nate, it's all yours, if you have anything?
Okay. Well, you summed that up nicely, basically, we've got two proposals in front of you, the first one is to complete kind of that site assessment and then the coordination with FEMA to update their damage assessment to get a more realistic cost put together. And then also to come up with a four oh six mitigation proposal, which would basically double the money that FEMA would allot for that project. And so we've completed the site assessment, so now we're just kind of finalizing our cost estimates and things that we can deliver to FEMA. The way that this is going to work is between FEMA and the state, they will pay for eighty-five percent of the total project costs and engineering. And so we're going to work closely with the city and FEMA to make sure that we can get this funded and move forward, so this FEMA proposal basically just kind of covers us sculpting that project and then getting all the coordination and everything through FEMA. And then once we decide on what exactly that project scope is and the type of repair, then we can finalize everything with the final design efforts. We didn't want to take this through final design at this point because we need to verify with FEMA that you don't need to do a second engineering selection to ensure that these engineering costs would also be eligible. We have verified that the costs that are included in this proposal will indeed be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. And then the second proposal there includes the, the sizing and basically doing the preliminary engineering to come up with a cost for what that bridge replacement would be. Now, we've looked through and this is not going to be a FEMA-eligible cost. As Beth mentioned, there's some erosion around the bridge, but the bridge itself hasn't really been damaged. The, there really isn't enough money left over even with the four oh six mitigation proposal to have the replacement of this bridge be included. So this would likely be a separate effort for the city. So again, this is just the cost for us to come in, do the hydraulic analysis and come up with kind of a type, size, and location that we can put a really good cost to the city so you can decide how you want it to proceed. In discussions with Beth and Chuck Shane, you know, we really thought that it would be beneficial to try to group these two projects together. You know, if you're going to be using that FEMA money to repair the Gabion Wall on that waterway, it certainly makes sense to include that bridge replacement. I know it's kind of a lot of information, a small area there, but that's kind of what we're looking at.
How much did I hear you say FEMA was going to take, take care of?
So FEMA is going to pay for eighty-five percent of the repair basically of the Gabion Wall and any damage that we can point to that was directly related to that deracial. So they'll pay for eighty-five percent of, of that cost, the way that they come up with that total cost is they calculate what is the exact in-kind replacement. And then they can basically double that cost for a mitigation proposal, so the project would essentially double its size. Right now, they've allocated a hundred thousand dollars approximately for that repair. In our preliminary work right now, we think that that's probably closer to two hundred thousand dollars in direct repair. And with our mitigation proposal, that would probably put it closer, getting four hundred thousand dollars of a total project cost. So FEMA would cover eighty-five percent of that four hundred.
Only related to the Gabion Wall, correct?
Only related to the Gabion Wall and then whatever mitigation efforts we could do for that stretch between basically the bridge and Main Street by Fountain Park there. Some of the things we could look at would be alternate materials, instead of a Gabion Wall, something that may be a little more durable, incorporating kind of a stepped-back wall design, that kind of stepped back into the particle a little bit, so you'd have two stages of walls, so that would slow the velocity down as it makes that corner. If we do end up replacing that bridge at the same time, we could kind of soften that curve and blend that all out, really reduce that velocity and reduce the damage potential in future events as well.
Any other questions for me?
Well, is it Main Street or Dubuque?
I'm sure you're gonna need to speak up.
I know.
Yeah, that's Old Dubuque.
So does your proposal for the wall include going past the bridge that's on Old Dubuque?
Oh, south of the bridge on Old Dubuque?
Yes.
Not currently because that's Excuse me?
Isn't there Gabian Bridge, isn't there Gabian wall there too?
Yeah, but there wasn't any damage associated with the Duragio identified with that.
Oh, okay.
And so this is really limited to kind of the area that FEMA had identified the selected damage.
Okay.
Now, if, as this project progresses and if there's something that wants to be done outside of the FEMA work, but still be included in that project, we could certainly evaluate that as well.
If I remember right, there's a storm sewer that comes in there too at that point. Is there any damage to that or any repairs that needs to be completed with that?
Yeah, so you're referring to the inlet on Cedar Street? I believe to the north?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did identify that there were certainly some washouts that occurred along that and piping that occurred along that storm sewer kind of between east Cedar and the creek. And so we are including an assessment of that as well and trying to get some of that repair incorporated with this project.
Okay.
There's some pretty obvious kind of sinkholes around that kind of along that storm sewer line.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion by Rich, second by Alan, to approve HW Engineering for the FEMA Gabion Wall Project. Further council discussion? Any public comment?
I will just give you a heads up, Mr. Mayor, that Josh and I, when you move on to the next agenda item, would like to retry eight point two.
Certainly. Thank you, Rebecca. Do you have anybody virtually that'd like to comment on eight point four?
I do not.
Let's move forward, Beth.
Smith?
Yeah.
Dow?
Yes.
Lockhart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. With that, moving back to eight point two for a retry, project status update from H R Green. Josh?
Okay, Josh, I've asked you to unmute.
All right, can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can.
Hey, perfect. I'm sorry for the technology issues. Um, so we included, just to give the council a brief update, we included just a high level summary in the packets for a couple of different projects we're working on through town. The first three are transportation projects. The fourth is a project for the water department with the new well. And then the fifth is ongoing GIS work that we're working on with the city. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on any of these projects and we can discuss anything more if the council would like to.
Everything related to the project progressing as normal?
Yeah, if you'd like, I can kind of run through each one of these and just give a high level summary. Would that help?
Yes, please.
All right, let's, let's do that. Starting on the list, number one, the Sycamore Street Rehab. That's about a block of a little bit of surface restoration and re, and mill coat on the street. We are continuing to progress that and trying to identify what the project extent to be and the overall cost. So that is going to be continued to progress over the next week or so with a deliverable anticipated soon. So more to come over the next couple of weeks on that project. The second one, the Scott and Main Street Intersection Improvement Project. That's looking at expanding that intersection at Scott and Main to facilitate some, some truck turning and other large vehicle turning. We have identified a general concept and submitted that to the city staff. If there's any feedback on that concept, we'd be happy to take that and continue to develop it or look at something else if needed. But I think that was, that was something that we were looking for a little bit of input from the city on.
Now, the only concern that comes to mind on that is you know, not having Old Dubuque Road, that's kind of a limp along for truck traffic to get out there. If we do this between now and the Old Dubuque one fifty-one intersection, are we completely gonna temporarily shut down truck traffic? I mean, is that, is the timing, I'm not sure what timing we're talking on this.
I think for the most part, that construction could be outside of a lot of traffic impact in that area. So we should be able to keep some type of traffic control in place to facilitate ongoing traffic. Did that answer your question?
I think Jeff brings up a very valid point, Josh, so as these projects move forward, you know, please give all consideration possible to allow that flow of traffic to remain open. I'm sure the council realizes that there's going to be some hurdles there, but as much as we can mitigate having to detour traffic through more of a residential area, the better it will be.
You hate to detour a detour.
Yes, most definitely.
Understood. We will keep that in mind on any of these, these roadway projects. All right, let's, I'll continue to move on. The third project is the five-way intersection by the high school to TEEP study. As just a high level background at this point is that the TEEP study is funded through the DOT. The DOT currently operates, I think, July one fiscal year. There are no TEEP study dollars through last year's fiscal year, but we're anticipating more upcoming next fiscal year. And so we will be putting together and are about ready to finalize that request for DOT for that funding. And that would, that funding would be for a study to evaluate that intersection and help with traffic. So we're anticipating funds to be released sometime after their fiscal year in the ballpark of July. No action either needed on that project at this point. Any questions on the five-way intersection TEEP study?
Don't think so.
All right, number four, Jordan Well Number Six. This is a new water supply well for the city's water system. That is in we're our progressing final design and we'll get that over to the city in the next week or two. And that is just as a refresher, that's a project that will include a new Jordan well drilled in the Remley Woods Park area to supplement the existing wells that the city has and plan for the long-term replacement and of the one that's out on the water treatment plant site. So that is being progressed. We've had environmental review through the DNR and SRF program. That is progressing as well and anticipate that wrapping up here over the next couple of months. So we can get a set of projects bid out to contractors sometime this summer. Any questions on the Jordan Well Project?
Not at this time.
All right, and then the last project, just some ongoing GIS work, doing a couple of different things in town. Wrapping up some of the water work and progressing to some of the sewer systems, stormwater and sanitary sewers. And there's a little bit of an update there on an upcoming need for potentially some more ongoing annual GIS work orders. So there's a couple of bullet points there in terms of some city staff looking to either purchase or continue to utilize H R Green's GIS equipment, continue to get some GIS data acquisition. Nothing outstanding from the city at this time. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Council, any, any questions on what Josh has reviewed? It doesn't appear to be any at this time, Josh. Thank you for the status update on those five projects that H R Green is facilitating for the city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Have a good night. Eight point five, discussion of possible action on utility building, billing protests for two oh two North Huber, Darrell Reinick? It doesn't appear Darrell is present in chamber. Has he joined us virtually, Rebecca?
I, I don't see him. He could be the, the other phone that's joined, so I'll just remind the phones who've joined that star nine is how you raise your hand if you'd like to speak. But otherwise, I don't see somebody that I think would be, would be him.
It's unfortunate that Darrell could not join us with this agenda item. Council, would you like to generate any discussion? I will take that as a no and move on from eight point five without any discussion or decision. Eight point six, resolution hiring and setting salary for wastewater superintendent for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Further council discussion?
Has he accepted?
He has.
You think he was a pretty good prospect into this job?
Yeah, yeah. He, he has all the certifications we need. He's currently a wastewater superintendent. He works for Alliance, which is a third party. They run the plants. So yeah, he's pretty well-rounded.
Okay, good.
Very good finding. Further council discussion? Beth, would you conduct the roll call, please?
April?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Lockhart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion to approve hiring and salary carried unanimously. Eight point seven, resolution approving the time extension and setting salary for full-time temporary water operator for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Kay, in further council discussion?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Lockhart?
Yes. Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Dow?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Eight point eight, resolution approving the hiring and setting salaries of seasonal part-time employees for the Parks and Recreation Department for the twenty twenty-one summer season.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John. Council discussion? Beth?
Lockhart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Dow?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
April?
Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Charlie, it looks like you've assembled quite the team for this upcoming season.
Good care.
Eight point nine, review and approval of RagBri agreement.
The attorney reviewed this and thought it was okay. I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Rich, second by Alan, further council discussion?
Smith?
Yeah.
Dow?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Lockhart?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract that's submitted carried unanimously. I'm getting some looks from the audience. Is there discussion to be had?
On the contract?
Yes.
Yeah.
My apologies. I would, I guess I would like to hear. I thought the contract had passed the review of the committee.
I guess we just wanted to, a little bit of clarification on the agreement because of kind of what it indicates as far as the money going and where it's going and how all of that is allocated. We just want to make sure that everybody was on the same page with the agreement.
I guess, I thought that was in the items to come, yet my apologies.
No, that's, that's okay.
I wasn't trying to shorten this.
The contract RagBri sent to us?
Okay, so we just wanted to confirm. So they sent the agreement. We had some emails back and forth and I don't, I don't know kind of some things may have gotten crossed in our, in our emails back and forth, but you know, the agreement refers to the city and the money that, that the starting, the startup dollars that go to the city, which is fifteen thousand, which is what the committee uses to, you know, put down payments on dumpsters and porta potties and all of that. Last year, we came to the council and we talked about, you know, the seed money. And at that time, February twenty-fourth, I think, was when it was last year, the council approved to give us startup seed, seed money. This year, RagBri is providing that. And so we don't need to ask for that seed money because they're providing it to the committee.
That's not what the contract states, though.
That's why, that's why I'm
I did talk to RagBri and I talked to our city attorney, who also consulted a few other cities that have signed the same agreement. Correct, the seed money last year wasn't supposed, that's not exactly how it was supposed to be. The seed money was a loan to you, to the committee to get things started, but it's reimbursable.
Right, right.
So, but this money, it states in the contract is for the use of city property.
So I think that there was, and that's why we kind of had some conversations back and forth and that's what we needed to discuss this because Dieter Drake from RagBri, we've had some conversations back and forth about amending this. And I guess this can stay as it stands if the city is still willing to honor the obligation from last year, which was fifteen thousand in seed money to help us put on the event to send RagBri sends to you. So that's that fifteen thousand. I think Dieter is on the Zoom call here to answer any questions that we have, but so that's kind of where that, this is my third, I'm sorry, Dusty Embry, six oh two North Lynn Street. This is my third RagBri that I've helped organize and plan and I'm kind of just a helper this year, but I'm here just because I have some experience with all of this and I've been on the committee and some of these faces, you know, have been on this group talking about this and we've been wanting to make sure that everybody's kind of involved and in the know. So, you know, RagBri can't be put on without a lot of money. Starts with some money. Starts with some money because we need to buy dumpsters and porta potties and t-shirts and all the good things that make people want to come to the community and make us be good hosts, right? So we assemble a ton of people, we get together and, and we do that on behalf of the city as, as actors on your behalf. We're a committee of people that volunteer our time to do all of this. We can't do it without money. So in, in last year on February twenty fourth, I think, we came to the city council. I, Betty and Trevor at that time came. And we told you about all the stuff that we were willing to be doing. So, um, I'll just review it because it's been a heck of a year, right? Over the course of the last year, there's been a lot that's happened. So at that time, we informed the city that, you know, we would be at overnight town, um, and that RagBri would give each one of those cities fifteen thousand dollars to support the expenses associated with RagBri. Um, but on the committee's behalf, we asked that the city provide that seed money to help us get the ball rolling. So just like what I mentioned, the t-shirts, the, you know, down payments on things that we need. Um, and then the promise that we would reimburse that when RagBri, RagBri reimbursed that. So within one month of the event and the fifteen thousand dollars comes back to the city, which is what we've done in the past, which is what I've done in other communities as well. Um, we are, um, we also on February twentieth last year shared the theme, which is size matters. Um, and we like it big. So the big Gothic statue, big pumpkin, we have the big house, we have all those things. So, you know, this group, the committee was super excited to announce that and you all saw that again in the paper last week. So, or maybe a little bit. Um, so, and then they also announced that RagBri was going to be doing a fifteen thousand dollar charitable donation, which we're also super excited about because that's new, um, for the twenty twenty one event. And that the committee organizing the ride and planning it and putting all that blood, blood, sweat and tears really is what it is into it had decided that it would go towards bringing the God Bless America statue back to town for good, back to Anamosa where it needs to be for good. Um, and the town's been pretty excited about that. It was announced last year, I think, right after that city council meeting, it was in the paper, there was a big thing. And it's been on Facebook this year, seventeen shares, lots of people excited about bringing the statue back to town. So I think a lot of people have jumped on board to help because they know that that's kind of the ultimate goal is we get to bring the statue home. So that's pretty exciting. Um, so this agreement is really the only new part of this whole thing this year. All of these things you've heard before. We've seen February twenty fourth, I think of last year, and we shared all of these things with you. Um, the only other new thing I guess about this year is that Anamosa needs this. It's been a tough year. It's been a tough business year. We're going to bring twenty thousand people to our community and we're going to show them what Anamosa is, which is amazing. And we're so excited and it takes a lot of people to put it on. Um, so the, the agreement in the packet reflected what we thought last year. You were giving us fifteen thousand dollars in seed cash, we were going to give that back too. And that's why it is the city of Anamosa. Dieter had said to us that he's willing to change the agreement and I think he maybe talked to a couple of people last week about that, that he was willing to change the agreement for us. And he's done that for some other communities. Um, so that's why, that's, that's why the agreement is how it is. But, um, so if you honor the commitment for the seed money that you agreed to last year, then the, the agreement is fine. We just will then need that, that fifteen thousand dollars in seed money. But then no, RagBri will reimburse to you.
That item's not listed on the, 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 the agenda item is to agree to the RagBri agreement. That's all that's on here.
So I, I'm kind of, I'm, I guess I need help understanding. The committee wasn't notified that this was on here.
Yeah.
And we had some emails back and forth about how this needed to be changed and amended prior to it being agreed upon. So the city has agreed to that fifteen thousand dollars they agreed to at last year in February, February twenty four.
So I guess I definitely need to chime in here. This is an error on my part and I'll own it. It was, I just, for some reason I thought the discussion had come on the allocation of the charitable. Uh, so I did not, I was not trying to silence anyone. With that, that's my air. Uh, it, it appears that there's some discussion that the committee would like to have about the agreement that we just approved. So Beth, I guess I, here's where I need to ask you is due to my air, how do we move forward?
That's up to the city council.
If, if I-
It was Rich's motion.
Sorry, Beth, go ahead, go ahead, finish. I was just gonna share a couple of things, but go ahead.
Um, it was Rich's motion. He would have to rescind his motion or?
Well, I, truthfully, I don't see why at the next meeting you cannot come and request the fifteen thousand seed money and have that on the agenda. Because if we postpone this and drag it out and drag it out, I don't know what's going to happen because on that charitable donation, that has to be done by April thirtieth.
So the fifteen thousand dollars was agreed to last year?
That was for last year and you gave it back.
In good faith, as we should have.
Right.
As we should have. And, and thinking we were operating in, in good faith tonight.
But that was, that was a motion for twenty twenty. So if you want the fifteen thousand for twenty one, I believe you need to come back and request it next meeting. Is that not correct?
Right.
And get it on the agenda for an action.
Is, is there a reason why you wouldn't favor that, Dustin?
My concern is just, I, I don't know what everybody's thinking around the table. That fifteen thousand dollars, I guess, is essential to the committee to keep going, right? We've got a lot of volunteers giving up time to do this. We all have full-time jobs and other things that we're doing and in order to do RagBri, to host RagBri, we need all of these things. And so I don't know, I heard that say that it says to rent city property. Well, I don't know if either can speak to that a little bit, but what I understand it is it's going to help us pay for the things that RagBri needs. Porta potties, dumpsters, things like that, that we need to throw RagBri. And so that's been what the committee has done in the past and we can't start securing those things. And I, I, I guess that's where I would-
So what I'm getting out of our, your conversation is you don't trust us to re-honor our commitment from last year.
That's not it, sir, at all.
That, that, that sounds like what you're trying to tell me.
You know what? It's not, though. It's not. Um, I guess that I, I'm a little bit, I guess I'm a little cautious, just a little bit because of this. And because we've tried to, this agreement, we've tried to change this and it stayed the same. And then we got to vote on it without having a conversation. So I, you have to let me be a little cautious on that. I mean, I'm a generally a really rose-colored glasses kind of person.
Dustin, you're, in, I understand, you're cautious. You, you can direct that at me because I'm the one to drop the ball. And there was no intention there whatsoever.
No one contacted me about changing the agreement.
I, I think there's been some-
Who contacted me? I, I was not contacted about changing the agreement.
As, as far as I understood, there was a discussion about that agreement and that started-
The only per, the only committee that can allow the use of public property is this, the city council.
Right.
The city council is the only one that's authorized to enter into this type of an agreement. We also have a lot of work to do for RagBri. We have a lot of staff time that's going to be needed. It's not just volunteers, it's all of us. And we, so in other words, the taxpayers aren't going to be compensated for the use of their labor materials and property if we're just going to take the money in and give it back to you.
Okay, so this is why I'm having this conversation and why maybe I'm not thinking we should put it off till next time because I don't see that there's agreement-
But no one's had that conversation.
I think that there's, I think there's been a huge miscommunication about this then because it was my understanding that we did start to have these conversations.
We did.
And then we didn't hear back about what the issues were and then it became on the agenda.
I answered all of those. I've answered everything and I was-
I maybe wasn't present to all of that. I, I don't know. I just, I guess, I know what this takes. I know that the money is, every town I've worked in before, and I guess it was just this one, in Estoril. So the committee has gotten, the city has done it, it's what it needs to do as a city to host the twenty thousand people because it's twenty thousand people that come into your community and wow, what a time to showcase yourself. And the city's just bootstrapped and we've all got together and we said, okay, we gotta do this. Nobody is out spending money like crazy on things we don't need. It's the things that we need. And then any extra goes into whatever that thing is that this is greater group inside which this year happens to be the statue. People seem to be pretty excited about, willing to give up energy and power.
So in speaking from experience, I was heavily involved with, with Dusty. Actually, in two thousand twelve, I was the treasurer for the committee and how it worked then, this RagBri, um, allocated the fifteen thousand to the city um, for startup and all, all deposits, all bills, you know, everything from t-shirt sales to beer to um, sponsorships was deposited in an account. It was specifically ear-tagged Anamosa RagBri. It was under the city, it was under the city's, I guess officially on the, the tax ID, um, but it was earmarked Anamosa RagBri. And, you know, checks were written out for things, you know, entertainment, beer, law enforcement. Um, and when it all shook out, I mean, we paid our bills, we paid back the seed money and then any remainder, which there was really none. I mean, we, fortunate for the sheriff's department, we were able to come out whole. Um, if it wouldn't have been for Greg, we would have been in the negative. But that's, that's how it played out. I, I spent a lot of hours, a- as did Dusty and a lot of other people, but I've, um, I'm a bit of a hoarder for paperwork, so I still have my folder in my office um, from two thousand twelve RagBri with every bank statement and voided check and stuff. So that's, that's how it went in two thousand twelve, most recently.
And so we paid for police, I think, police with our-
A lot of money for law enforcement.
We, we really kind of got raked over the coals and we all kind of know better now in regards to certain things. Um, and I think even the way we did the money, maybe, you know, that wasn't quite the right, right way to do it. And this year we really, we talked about it, the committee looked at it and said, okay, it needs to be a five oh one C three. The animal is the festival, which is equipped to do this kind of thing. And so that's what we're running through this year.
Somebody, please tell me what the protocol would be. I, I understand if there's thought that we should be waiting till the next meeting to go through this. What does the, let's say the Bible say, what's, what are we supposed to be doing here? I, I, I'm, I'm hearing that they're, they're nervous about how we feel. Maybe we should tell them how we feel. I don't know. Is, is this correct to be doing it now or no?
Come up to the podium, please.
Betty Weimer, sixteen oh nine Metal Ridge Court. This is my second time doing RagBri and I would like some clarification. When the whole contract thing came about, we had RagBri meetings with the executive committee, which consists of Cody Shaker, myself, Leanna Boone, Seth DeEmbry, Beth, and Rod Smith. Now there were conversations that took place where Beth had concerns of the contract and which we said, great, let us hear your concerns. What are your concerns? Let's go over them. To which Beth, did you not reply? I don't know yet. I have to hear back from the attorney. I'll get back to you. When did you get back to us on the concern?
There weren't any concerns. He approved the contract as written.
And you told us you had concerns in which you also shared with us that you felt the money should go to the city. We also have visited with Des Moines in which Des Moines also visited with you in sharing clarification of the term the city and what the meaning in the contract of the city is. Is that correct?
No, the city is, these people sitting around this table right now are the only people who can commit city funds and property. You are asking and RagBri is asking for the city to commit funds and property. They're the only ones that can make that decision. A private citizen can't say, uh, commit to this.
Okay.
The city should. The city didn't know, the city wasn't consulted. We have had very little information about anything with RagBri. I had to ask Leanna to send me the contract because I hadn't seen it. No one from RagBri had been in contact with me whatsoever. So I don't-
And I apologize that-
Mainly that I'm getting secondhand news later after the fact without knowing anything that's going on.
And I got to say that I do apologize that Jacob's not here anymore. That is a mishap. I don't know the situation that was left. However, a year ago, there was a trip made to Des Moines and in that trip, there were three people from the city that took that trip. Jacob, Rod Smith is the mayor and I believe Jeremiah, you were on the trip to Des Moines. So the city has been involved since day one. There's been, no, let me finish. I've got the floor, thank you. There has been no keeping anything from anybody. There's been no secrets. From the minute that RagBri was going to come to town, our city administrator at the time was involved. He is no longer here. So whatever ball that got dropped is not on the behalf of the RagBri committee. We have been upfront, we've been open, we've been honest, we've been all-inclusive. We've involved city officials, we've involved city personnel. I would also like to have Dieter, if he's got a chance to speak and explain that he did approach you about the contract and about how it's written. Because in other cities, the person who hosts the festival is not the city council, it's not the city municipalities, it's not the city hall. In the contract reading of the city, it means your host town. It doesn't mean the city entity in itself. And I'll let Dieter further explain that. Are you on there?
He is. Um, oh, he literally, oh, yeah, there he is. Sorry, your, your video moved. I couldn't find you again. All right. You should be, there we go.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Betty, and thank you, everybody. Um, yes, the intention of that money, I think just, if I could spend just thirty seconds kind of reviewing the history of why we, why we increased the amount and kind of the history of, uh, how this all came about. Um, the, the amount we agreed, uh, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, that was provided to overnight towns. For example, two thousand twelve in Anamosa was far too low uh, for, um, to support the, the organizing committees in each town. So that was nego, that number, the new number used to be eighty-five hundred, now it's fifteen thousand dollars plus the fifteen thousand dollars, actually seventeen, in charitable contributions. Um, that was negotiated between us and the IEDC. Um, because the transition of the old leadership and the new leadership, we mutually agreed that was far too little uh, in terms of support for the, uh, the local organizing committees to pay for bills and things like that. So we increased that and actually doubled, more than doubled it. Um, so that's, that's the intention and I can only tell you that what other towns are doing. Um, and you may have your own information, but it's my understanding that virtually all the other towns are using it, using that money to support their, their organizing committee as seed money to get started. Because that was, that was the, really the complaint a year ago that previous RagBris, they had to start from scratch and it was just really too hard for them to start from scratch to put it all on. So it was real, the intent is for support to get that, get those organizing committees locally started. Um, that's the intent. And I think, again, I think that's the, that's the norm for the balance of the towns on RagBri this year. So. Yeah.
Thank you, Dieter.
Welcome.
So I guess, again, how, how do we get out of the predicament? My shortcomings put, put us in here this evening.
The way I look at this, I go back to next meeting. We have it on the agenda as the fifteen thousand for seed money. I mean, otherwise we take this, they take this contract off, remove it. and it doesn't get accepted until maybe next meeting. If then, and if that, it, it may not even get approved until May. And at that point, then it's too late, the way I read it, for the charitable contribution. Because they want that by April thirtieth.
You, you do need to move up to the microphone so we can hear you.
I mean, the charitable contribution, the committee that's working to bring RagBri to town, made that decision last year, made that decision again this year. That's why people have signed on to help bring the statue back permanently. That decision was made by the committee. I think there'll be a lot of angry disappointed people if that decision is changed.
We're not trying to change the decision. We're just trying to get this done before April thirtieth.
Right, I understand that. I understand that.
And, and I don't know that, and I, I'm not gonna speak for anybody, but as far as that fifteen thousand for seed money, as far as I'm concerned, we'll honor it from what we did before, but it has to go on the agenda as an action.
And that's understandable.
But, but from your conversation, it sounds like you don't trust us from earlier, which kind of bothers me a little bit.
Well, I think you're putting words into my mouth too, sir. I, I really
Well, I don't think I am.
You have to understand that I'm gonna be a little skeptical of everything. I, I just am. We're trying to we're, we're, we're operating in good faith. I believe we all want this. I believe we all had a good time planning it last time. We did it in twenty twelve. I mean, that was a long time ago. Um, I think we're all gonna have a good time doing it this year. I think we're operating in good faith. I just didn't know whether the agreement should read the city or if it should read the committee. What, what makes the most sense? Because I totally get where where Beth's coming from. This reads as it's the city and all, and this is a rental contract. It's a city property. We are using so much property within the city. We're using the school, we're using, I mean, everything in the city is being used. I get how this reads. I read it and I thought, gosh, this needs to be changed because it does look like this comes right into the city and this is theirs and, and this is how it is. And so I just, my questions and confusion really lied in this and whether we should approve this as a read or whether we should change this to read Animal's Festival.
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like your arguments with RagBri, not with us.
That's, that's a piece of it. But that's why I wanted to speak to that piece of it, for sure.
If I could, if I could, if I could jump in real quick, this is Dieter again. We, we can amend the agreement. We've done it with a bunch of other towns for this or that, and it's not a problem to change it. So, and it certainly, it's not too late. Um, and April thirtieth, I wouldn't, there's plenty of time between now and RagBri in July to get this right. Let's get it right the first time rather than having to go back. So um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider April thirtieth a hard and fast date. If we need to negotiate this a little bit longer, then I'm perfectly happy to do that. And also change it if we need to. It doesn't, it's, um, it's, um, I wanna get this right. And I think everybody there wants to get it right the first time, so.
I think our goal is everybody, we want everybody to be happy. We want this whole thing to go off without a hitch. And so that was my question is, if he's going to change it, maybe we should just pull that back, change the agreement, come back next time, look at it, how we think it should be.
Well, can I, can I ask Dieter a question? I just have a question about RagBri in general because in my experience, which I've had RagBri three different times, um, the city was the one who made the application to be an overnight town because it is a commitment of city resources. Um, I did ask Dieter for a copy of the application, um, going back to that.
Yeah, it, and again, I'm, I'm new as well. So in two thousand nineteen, I was hired, late two thousand nineteen, I was hired and I kind of got, uh, thrown into this process all of a sudden. Um, in my experience and my knowledge, based on the applications that I received for the two thousand, well, it would have been the two thousand twenty event. Um, it was from the city, it was from the chamber, it was, or there were a bunch of different official applicants on those, on those official applicants. There was no agreement um, ever executed in the past like we're talking about now. There was only just a one-page application. And that, that application was accepted and there was some sort of a, a sign-off process after that. We changed that process this year because we thought it was just too loose and wasn't formal enough. So, um, again, all, all, in my, based on my knowledge, it was all sorts of different organizations, including cities, but there were also chambers and CVBs applying officially.
So there's no vetting process then for the public official?
Yeah, yes.
There's no vetting process that makes sure that, that the city is on board with it?
That, again.
And in my experience, the city did have to apply, the city council did have to vote on the signature, even if it was someone else signing it. The city allowing this, the application to be submitted. And that's all. We were just a little surprised that we were an overnight town.
Yeah, that, that could very well have been the case. Again, I'm just basing on paper history that I see. There was very little information transferred from the old organization to ours.
Thank you.
I am a grown, I am a chamber. Um, I started at the chamber in twenty seventeen. Um, about every August, we get an application or we get the application from RagBri to sign up. Um, I wasn't sure what to do, if we were supposed to do it. So at the time, I contacted the city administrator, which I believe was Alan at that time. He said, we apply for it every year. Um, so I sent mine in. He said he sent his in. Um, the following year, I believe, was Jacob. I checked with him. He said, we send it in every year. I send mine in, he sends his. That's how that happened. Um, I also spoke with Casey, who used to be the chamber director. When she was there, gets sent in every year. Um, I checked back. I looked at every agenda item from twenty eleven. There was never any council approval needed um, or asked to apply for RagBri. It's just something that has been done. And twenty twelve was when RagBri, I think, the Animal's Festival happened. So the previous year, there was no discussion with the council about, can we do this? Like I said, I was always told when I started my job, we, we apply for it. Do the same thing.
You have to come up to the podium, Dustin.
I'm sorry, it's just a paper. It's just like, hey, you, you, information update. Are you, you know, potentially interested? You fill it out every single year. Every community does unless they, you know, somebody in the community said, oh, we're totally not gonna do that. But it's, it's just, it's just an interest form. It's not like a, it's not a commitment too. Because they could then say, they could come to you then the next year, because they do, and they say, hey, we're gonna, it's, this is it this year for real. You're getting this twenty thousand people to your county. Are you sure you want them? You know, I mean, so it's not, this is just that interest form. And yeah, every year. Everybody, every chamber director I've ever known is just always
And it's obvious to all of us here that Dusty, Leanna, and Betty are passionate about RagBri uh, coming to Animal's, is, as well as, you know, everybody I've talked to in the community. So I, I would like to see us make this work. And if it is excellent, the prior approval and me visiting this in two weeks, then that's what I would like to see us do. Again, I, it was my air. I owned it. I should have given the public time to comment. I thought the agreement as it was submitted that was favorable to everyone. I thought changes were already made and obviously I was wrong. To, to act this though, I want the council's support in saying this is what we should do.
Have we compared this agreement to two thousand and twelve?
There wasn't one.
There wasn't one?
I think to soften things up here a little bit, um, I think all of us here would like to see this go smoothly. Um, I think we need to drop the confrontation and, 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 and stop talking about what's going on and start thinking about what needs to be done. Um, we don't have as much time as we would like. Uh, so hashing this thing over this way isn't gonna solve it. We need to get this taken care of because RagBri is less than four months away from us now. Um, I'm sure that all of us can get this figured out. And then what I would suggest is after RagBri, we pick people, uh, liaisons from the, the city council and members of the group. And we sit down and we work out a way to make this happen the next time it, it comes around. So we don't have to go through this again. That's my opinion. And I, I don't think that wait, I think Rich has a point. I think it might, it's not gonna hurt us to wait one more week or two more weeks to the next meeting, uh, and bring this up. Or you can make an official request so we can do what needs to be done. We have to have faith in you that you're gonna do right by us and, and by the, the people here in town and by RagBri. And you're gonna have to have faith that we make the correct decisions too. In the end, we have to live with what you do and you'll have to live with what we do. So, uh, sure.
Betty Weimer again. Um, as far as the seed money, Beth, did you relate to anybody on the RagBri committee that the way we asked for the seed money from the city last year with the intention to pay it back, that that was not the legal way to do it? Are we gonna show up in two weeks to find out that one of your concerns was we did it wrong and we are not able to do it now?
No, and I already told you that.
I'm just, we have the camera going. I just want clarification. That's all I'm doing, is asking for clarification. So I appreciate that. The answer was no. Thank you.
But how do we, no?
Just bring it back for the seed money request, I mean.
But I'm also hearing that there is some possible verbiage in the agreement that should be cleaner.
Patrick didn't think so. Um, it's the exact agreement that was forwarded to me from the committee, from RagBri. I don't know. I just put the agreement exactly as it was given to me on the agenda. I did not change anything. Neither did Patrick. It was exactly what RagBri had sent us. It's what you forwarded to me.
Could, could whoever was speaking, please move to the microphone? Thank you.
Betty Weimer again. So we had a executive committee meeting amongst the RagBri, the six people I named, in which we laid out the agreement and at that time, we discussed we need to go through this agreement together as a committee because there should be some changes made to it. And you were part of that, Beth. We even asked you and you said, until I hear back from the attorney, you didn't know. We never heard back from you, other than now it's on the agenda without the committee, which you are part of, Beth, without us all sitting around at the table and going over that agreement. Of course, we're gonna give it to you the exact same way we got it from Des Moines. We would not, not have done that. But as part of the six of us, we should have gone through that and discussed each item in the agreement and made the changes before we got here to know.
No one sat
That's how it should have been done.
No one sat down with me. I got an email with the agreement in it from Leanna. I sent it to Patrick. She asked if it was going to be on the agenda. I said, Patrick hasn't finished reviewing it. There was no sit-down.
So at a meeting at seven AM on a Thursday morning, it was never discussed?
No, I said I hadn't seen the agreement and that's when she sent it to me. That was the only discussion I had at the meeting. That was it.
So after you got the agreement and we had a meeting at seven AM and the question was, let's go over the agreement and you said, until I hear back from the attorney, we're not gonna go over it. So when you heard back from the attorney, you never got back with the committee to go over it, correct?
There wasn't any changes. You only asked if he had any changes. And it was just in an email. We didn't make any changes to the agreement on the city side.
We, we have, I'm hoping this returns to the agenda. Uh, we have time to clean all this up and get an agreement that, I guess, Dieter, the committee, and the council can support from being agreed that this is what, how we want everything to be. It doesn't sound like there's a lot of verbiage that we would want clarification and clean, but I think there is some.
If we are gonna change it, I will want Patrick to review it again. He's fine with the way it is, but he'll need to review it if we're going to be changing it again.
Jeff DeEmbry again. I think, I think what the mayor's proposing makes the most sense. I think that we could all get our brains around it then. We have time to get it back to Patrick for sure to make sure that it makes, you know, that it works for the city. I mean, I do think that that makes the most sense. And then it might come back exactly as is. We might ask for the money. That might be how it is. I just don't think that we've had the proper discussion around it. I think it, it would be more fair to do that. I guess that's what we would ask.
And, and just please keep in mind that this now becomes a time set.
Well, it's a four-page document. I mean, is there, could the, could the committee get together in person or via Zoom and just kind of go through line by line and, and just do that? Bring it back, have Patrick look at it, present to the next, uh, council meeting in, in two weeks, do that? I would think that exercise would be possible in two weeks.
I, I'm seeing, seeing nods of yes from the committee.
Well, has the committee already reviewed the contract and come up with their concerns?
Okay, so when we discussed it, Beth was the one at the meeting when we said, let's go over the contract. She says, I have some concern. At which time we said, Des Moines told us we could change the contract. Let's go over what your concerns are. And her response was, until I hear back from Patrick, I'm gonna have the attorney look it over because he has concerns. And I specifically said, what are the concerns? I asked it, what happened to be the concern? And Beth says, as soon as I hear back from the attorney, we'll go over it. Guess what? Now I hear, we have no concerns. We're happy with the way the contract is as we
That wasn't my question. My question is, did you guys go over the contract and list your concerns?
We were gonna do it collaboratively as a group with Beth. That's what I just said.
But you just, but you said that we had concerns.
No, Beth was the one that told us.
Earlier on, you said you guys had concerns about the contract. But evidently, they weren't relayed.
I think the concerns we have is the interpretation of where the money goes. Because if you ask Dieter, just because it's the city, they're just referring to the host town. It's supposed to be a starter. I mean, that's, or it's not supposed to, it's not supposed to take the renting of the town.
So I, well, because I see this contract's dated March thirtieth, so it's been two weeks. So you guys had the contract, I'm guessing, for two weeks? And you had these concerns. Did you relay those to Beth at that point in time?
We were trying to find out what the city's concerns were. We were going to discuss it and, and again, Dieter was the northern one, changed some verbiage. He told me he's had to do that for several times. It's not a big deal. Um, I've reached out to several other towns also. Their cities are, you know, Their cities are, you know, behind them. They get the startup money. It's not, I'm not saying that you're not. I'm just saying it's not. This is a bigger deal than it should be.
It really is because as far as I'm concerned, we can approve this. And do the fifteen thousand next week. But evidently you guys don't feel. Like we will do that. We will follow through with what we say we're going to do.
Reggie, that's not the thing. What we're going off of is meetings we have had with Beth. And Beth is the one saying to us. I don't want to discuss this until I hear back from the attorney.
We're beating it.
Well, we're, we're going around the circle.
That we're, it's not that we're not trusting you, but when we're meeting with your city clerk slash city administrator, we're going off of what she's telling us. In these meetings, what you guys. I mean, we can only.
Let me just say this. It sounds like Beth and Rod were a party to those meetings.
Yes.
So, and I realize Rod would not be acting in an official capacity at that meeting. Because he was not appointed by the council to attend as mayor.
He doesn't have to be. I don't understand.
You, you are correct, Rich. I do not.
Yeah, he's, he's not. He's not, he's not in an official capacity in that scenario. But the council is the one who will make that decision. So just because.
Decision are you talking about? Whether or not Rod acts as a mayor.
No, well, we would make that as whether or not he would be on there as an official capacity. But we would make the decision on the fifteen thousand, not Beth. The council. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to why you're just relying on everything Beth says. When it's the council that is going to make that decision. I mean, you said on the council, you know.
Oh, I totally get it. And that's part of why I was confused. So I'm totally on track with you. When she's at these meetings and when we bring up, let's go over the contract at the meeting. Let's talk about the contract and go over it line item. Beth shut it down and said, until I hear back from the attorney because of concerns we have. We're not going to talk about the contract. In which the question is, well, what are the concerns? Let's address them. That is exactly verbatim how the meeting went. Is it not, Beth?
It is not. It is not.
Okay, well, there you have it. And there, Rich, because of communication like that is probably why the whole entire committee is a little bit wary about.
The whole.
Just the way things are being handled on that side. It has nothing to do with any of you personally. Um, it just. It has been relayed maybe to committee different than it should have.
I'm going to say something. I think it was relayed. All right, that somebody misunderstood somewhere. Or somebody thought that. It was going to be the way it was and it isn't. All you need to do is put on the agenda for next meeting. And ask for the seed money and we'll go from there. Instead of, instead of.
I, I would like to. Unless we're going to accept the approval of the contract. As it was earlier this evening. And only thing that needs to be on the agenda in two weeks is. The fifteen thousand dollar disbursement. I want to make sure all parties are good with this. Early on, it was, let's re, re-review the contract in two weeks.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's a pressing matter according to, you know, at RagBri, so.
Rod.
Prefer to try to start fresh. Even though. It's hard to do because we've already made the one decision. Start fresh in two weeks, review the contract, there may be some. Clarification on both parties. And then just proceed from there. But I want the council's support. To venture that bit.
Yeah, we just need to get it straightened out.
Well, yeah, and a big. A big piece I see of it, just because I've, I've been in that seat is exactly how's it going to look because I think there's a treasure in mind, but it's a big enough job in and of itself. Assuming you have these details figured out, but you know, if you don't, as far as the, how is it going to look as far as? Money going in, money going out, who's writing checks? I mean, because that, that needs to be. Addressed to make sure everybody's on the same page that, that way too.
Dashi Ambry, um, I can give you a little heads up for that so that nobody's. In two weeks, if this is how it's going to go and we're going to break the agreement tonight, we're going to come back and ask for the money. Doug Edel is our treasurer, fidelity bank.
And I, no, I, I knew, I knew that. I just meant, you know, we've thrown around the city festival. I, I, I meant that more specifically, you know, that, that piece of it.
And, and most of festivals would be our conduit. So. There are five oh one C three that's going to support us through this. Doug Edel will be the treasurer. So. It'll, it'll all be legit. That'll be, that'll be next week or next two weeks from now when we come back. If we're going to agree to this tonight. Two weeks when we come back, that's kind of what we'll be asking for. That fifteen thousand that they're giving you. And so that we can start doing, well, we've already started doing some, we're paying for things right now. So that actually is, there is a time sensitivity there because we do need to start paying for things. We can't just, you know, we're good looking, but we're not.
Betty Weimer again. There's one other thing in the contract that needs to be discussed that you guys are approving. And that is where the decision for the nonprofit for the fifteen thousand dollars goes. I hope you consider. And take to heart. If you're approving that contract tonight, that everything about RagBri has been planned, has been determined and has been contingent upon. That donation going to bring the Gothic couple home. Our logo, our theme, our t-shirt. Our everything we're doing in the community right now is based on that. We have gotten people who have stepped up with donations and volunteering. All because that is what they want to work for. So if you're approving the contract, the seed money is part of it, but I want you just to take to heart that other part also. Thank you.
I would prefer to see eight point nine. Eight point one zero to eight point one one on the agenda. In two weeks.
Eight point one one is an ordinance that we really need to keep moving forward.
But let, let me just ask you, with the discussion we've had as a, as a council so far. Do you trust us to do the fifteen thousand? As next time, or do you want this whole thing obliterated?
Exactly. We trust you. If, if you feel comfortable with this contract and you feel comfortable, I, I. I don't, I'm worried. I guess I'm not a lawyer. I don't know the legalities with the seed money, with all of that, with you giving us money and putting it into account. So I just thought it would be cleaner first. In good faith, I just thought it would be cleaner to, to just change the agreement. Because then it, there wouldn't be any sticky questions. It wouldn't be, you know, we'd just be, let's look at this agreement. Let's agree to this. We don't have to come to you for the seed money. It's already there. So that was my thinking. I. Of course you're gonna, you're gonna allocate money so that we can do this. I mean, there's no way we can do it if you don't. So I, I trust you. Trust is never the issue. Um, and I do think we can probably. Move on to the eight eleven, eight point one one tonight, the ordinance, because I do agree with that. We, that will help us, um, move on as a committee because. Vendor fees, you know, setting all of those things. There's people that are asking, having that set in stone. Um, the skipping of that eight point one would probably be a good idea.
Eight point one zero discussion, possible action regarding. Regarding to item three of the RagBri agreement titled charitable donation. Again, I would like to see that. Tabled until. The meeting in two weeks.
And I asked why?
Yeah, why?
I just feel that there's discussion to be had and. If we're going to stay with the agreement as it is. Without any changes to it.
We can't discuss about charitable contribution at this point in time?
We can. I'm just looking not to have. Not to have a decision on it because of the contract. It's on the agenda. We can certainly have the discussion.
Well, I mean, I, I think they've made it clear what they want to do with. The donation. I mean, unless there's some other charitable. Organization you're thinking about that we should be talking about.
I, I don't have any, no.
Well, then I, I don't see why we shouldn't delay it.
I've read this contract at least three times. Before the weekend, uh, I had a conversation with Pat. I feel very comfortable with the contract as it states. It's, it's a little loose. But you always find some kind of flaws in a contract, but I don't think it's anything that's going to create any serious problems. If we, uh, go to work and get this thing taken care of, we have the ability to, uh, work around those little loose spots if we need to. I'd like to give my opinion as how we do this, but, uh, that depends on what everybody decides here as far as what we're going to talk about tonight.
I, I would like to continue with. The, the only question I have is. What happens if you do not raise enough funds? To. Bring the American Gothic back? What happens to those bonds?
So Doug is on our, we have a committee called the Bring Them Home Committee that we've been working on this for.
Leanna, could you speak up into the microphone at least? Thanks.
So we have a committee called the Bring Them Home Committee. It's myself, Doug and Casey Wortman. Rod's been on there. Derek, Derek, and then I don't know if any of you remember Ernie Burish, but he's also been involved in our meetings and, um, just helping us with this also.
Doug Wortman, wife and I business owner here in town. We live right outside town. The. Just see if I can frame this up. Of course Rod knows this and most people know this, but maybe we've not been. Enough God credit to you for this. There's a phase one and a phase two associated with getting this. Majestic huge culture. Uh, ultimately to live here forever. Phase one is the first to get here for RagBri. And that's basically just running it for another year, eleven months, whatever it is they're about. And that charitable donation going through. Annual festival, going through that five oh one three C, get that funds as well as some other funds that have been raised and will continue to get raised. Again, phase one is get it here, get the exposure. We've got some things going on with the tenant governor to try to get some more exposure before it gets here. So that he can be here when it does get here and get it publicly advertised if you go across the state, those people will be right at the RagBri, stopping here in Seattle. Kind of get it all hyped up, if you will. Then in a combination of working with. Several people already got this ball rolling. Working with the state of Iowa and some different grants are available, which Derek is helping out with as well, as well as some other people including the limestone. Working with people that Ernie Burish knows who could be large corporate donors. Working with a couple of foundations that Ernie's involved with also. We are hoping that we can make this all happen. There's no guarantee, Rich.
So I know there's no guarantees, but just in case, you know. If it doesn't happen. Where's that money go?
Yeah, good question. So here's.
Do you have a backup plan?
Again, here's how I think it should get framed up. Phase one. Is to get it here for RagBri. Help you a lot of enthusiasm around it, help you a lot of notoriety around it. So even if we only have eleven more months. You still have that as a destination piece to get people here for another eleven months. You still have all that notoriety. It's going to get, get people to come here and shop. I think that's well worth that investment. Well worth it.
Well, and how much is that going to be? How much is that to get, get it here?
Twenty, twenty-five.
And how far along are you so far?
Leanna, could you speak directly into the microphone, please?
Initially, when we brought this up again, we, we had asked the city to take ownership of it. When we decided we wanted to do this again. Those plans have changed. We have another five oh one C three that is agreed to take ownership of it. So we're not asking the city for anything. No maintenance. We're not going, no insurance. We're not asking you to do anything for that. But we do have a backup plan. Um, with the money that we raised, if for some reason we can't make this happen, we're going to have some other big. Say made or in town that will still attract people. Our idea is to get people here, which. The statue was a huge draw off the town. Teresa can attest to that. Other business owners can tell you. It's important to have it here. Important for the whole community.
Well, I, I just wanted to know what the backup plan was because, you know, if, if you're getting money and you can't achieve the goal. Then what happens? You know, I didn't know. Some money would, or some of that would go to, say, the food bank and senior dining and, you know, for people who are in need. Or what your plan was.
It sounds like at least the, the, the fifteen thousand would go towards. Getting it here for the, the lease. I mean, if it's twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand, I mean, that's, you know, a little over half just for that portion of it.
Well, this fifteen thousand won't come in until the charitable portion of it doesn't come in until, what, thirty days after RagBri's been?
We, um, we've already been raising money. We have money. They're going to let us pay in payments like they did before. So that part is all worked out.
And, and I think it's. That money for renting it.
The first two rentals, say we get it, the purchase down the road, the first two rentals is, they consider that like a down payment, rent to own kind of thing. Is that what you said? I couldn't, I couldn't hear that. Okay.
And you, you do need to speak directly into the microphone, um, in order to be heard by those of us on Zoom.
Yeah, we need to pop that TV over there.
Nobody wants to look at me the whole time.
Financially, where are you? Percentage wise, the cost of getting, owning it? And where are you percentage wise as far as getting there?
Yeah, phase two, if you will, we're just at the ball and we're still waiting for some documentation on the foundation, toward our foundation. That's unfortunately passed away about a year ago right now.
Yeah.
That's complicated things and the board's changing over. We're waiting for some formal documentation. Remember, we can take then for the grant application. There's some big grants that are coming up for this fall, end of this year. And for some of the foundations. The charitable foundations that, uh, are verbally staying there.
Is there a time limit that you have to use those grants?
When you say use them, once you get them.
When you get them, is there a time limit that you have to spend that money?
Typically, it's forty-eight months. Depends on the size of the project. It's typically forty-eight months. Some of it, you know, would actually go towards a purchase of statues. Some of it might go towards some surroundings, some parking, things of that nature. Yeah, typically it's forty-eight months. And luckily we got a chance to work with somebody who reports directly to the governor that Ernie knows also. And, uh, we had a really good conversation with her and, uh, hopefully she's on the path of. Finance, metrics, wealth, art and cultural perspective, state and federal money. Right now, those balls are just getting rolling. What other questions? Yeah, I, I think some of you might know this one.
You know, I I think some of you might know this one. Everybody saw it when it's here, right? Beth, did you say what it's here? I mean, when I think about that big tall, it's actually twenty seven foot tall, but it sits on top of a two foot. Foundation, that that twenty seven foot tall thing. And how majestic it was, and I think back at how people felt when it was here in town. I mean, I I think the three big things that hit me on it is number one. Anamosa is a destination place, we got some cool stuff here, some really cool stuff, one which is Grant Wood. And that is just another added thing to bring people to Anamosa, another destination opportunity to get people here. Spend money, live here, part of art and culture that people want to live in these kind of communities. The fact it's a destination piece, I think is just key. Two. Pride, did you guys feel it? I felt it. People that I talked to that live here, that they would have their family or friends from somewhere else come here, they felt very proud of the fact that was here. And they lost a little bit of that when they left. Because it was very cool. It is something Grant Wood is going to be very proud of this year. And the third thing I think of, honestly, is, yeah. She was the one that did all the work, she has some people helping her, to raise the money, to make it happen to get here the first time. She's the one that's organizing everybody and making it happen to get you here this time. She's the one that's doing all the work and getting Ernie Burish involved to try and get it purchased to be here. She's got a ton of passion. I think that big huge thing, those are three things I think about. I can meet it.
Thanks Doug.
If I could jump in one more time, um, this is Dieter with RagBri, the again, the event has really kind of a dual purpose. It's to, it's to generate tourism and commerce, really commerce during the day of the event in town. Um, and we hope to, you know, with with the help of the city and the organizing folks, we help to make that a success. The other part is advertising for your community. And things like that, that statue are exactly what um we want to support, so. Again, we have the, we have the power, for better or worse, we have the power of a pretty large company behind us. And also the the following of RagBri itself, so we I we'd be more than willing to help. Help promote that effort and, you know, advertise that as best we can and help fundraise against that because if that doesn't happen. Um, it's not the end of the world, but that's that's kind of the mission of the event, the whole tourism focus of this event is to promote those kinds of activities. So whatever we can do to support that, we will.
Thank you, Dieter.
Well, unless somebody's got some other charity they're thinking about. I'm gonna make a motion to uh. To donate for the. American Gothic statue or what what is it, the? Anamosa Festival Committee?
Second.
Regarding eight point one zero, we have a motion by Rich, second by Kay. For the allocation of the fifteen thousand charitable go to Anamosa Festivals in lieu of the. American Gothic sculpture to be brought here from. Does the council have any other discussion? I am certainly not going to make the same mistake twice tonight. And not allow for public comment, I will start with in-house.
I just want to say thank you very much. And for all of you, I've been in your chair, I know your job's not easy. Um, I know you get brutally beaten up daily. And thank God people like all of us are thick skin and we can take it. But RagBri in two thousand and twelve was so much fun. The city, the businesses, the chamber, everybody worked together, it was one constant fun time. There is no reason why we can't all be doing that right now, thanks for your support and hearing us tonight.
Thanks, Billy. Is there any? Any public comment virtually? Beth, would you conduct the roll, please?
Yes.
Mockart.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Adrian.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, eight point one, first reading of ordinance, amending the code of ordinances for the city of Anamosa. Iowa under general code provisions by adding a new chapter, chapter ten, titled RagBri miscellaneous permits and regulation.
This has been what that's done. Um, I just went through, I just changed, really, it was mainly changing the dates and the numbers, Leanna filled in the numbers for the vendor amounts and then. I just changed the section I used or section out of our current code for the municipal infraction for the nuisance. That was pretty much it.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion by Kay, second by Alan, for the council discussion. Any public comment?
Stout.
Yes.
Adrian.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Smith.
Yeah.
Mockart.
Yes.
Dumba.
Yes.
It doesn't have the statement here, but. Is there any consideration being given to waive? Second and third?
Oh, um, I didn't think we were in that big of a hurry, so I didn't know if there would be any other comment. Um, I will have Patrick read through it before our final reading.
Waiving.
You can waive it if you want to, but. We have time.
Well, and if Patrick hasn't reviewed it yet, I'd like to have.
Let's do that review.
That's very understandable, Rich. Just tune in. Eight point one two, review and approval of March Treasures Report.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Comment? Or discussion from council? Any public comment?
Smith.
Yes.
Mockart.
Yes.
Dumba.
Yeah.
Stout.
Yes.
Adrian.
Yes.
From.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously, eight point one three, review and approval of current bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Alan. Further discussion from council. Any public comment?
Mockart.
Yes.
Dumba.
Yeah.
From.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stout.
Yes.
Adrian.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of bills carried unanimously, nine point zero, city administrators report.
Um, so this week we finished the audit, um, next week will be our final review, we'll go over. Um, some notes that the auditors are gonna have. Um, we're gonna work forward correcting anything the auditor suggested. I've still been working on trying to get the four-year audit completed. I haven't had much luck getting. Them going on it again, we do have the issue of our legacy system is going away. Um, I'm not sure how he's going to access the records that are four years back because we are only going to keep. Four fiscal years and that would take us back. Six fiscal years at this time. Um, so I am going to try one more time this week to get in touch with him. To see if he can at least pull what he needs out of the system. Um, if not, I'll probably bring it back to see if you want to cancel our contract with them. Um, since we probably aren't going to get the information we need anyway. So the clock's ticking on that one. Other than that, we've just been working on the usual stuff, the projects are moving along, the fire department projects making some progress. Excited about that downtown, we have the have the um permit applications approved, so that should be. Moving forward pretty quickly. We are gonna have some areas that are going to have to be used for staging or construction materials, so. We will be letting the property owner, well, we'll be letting, it's gonna be a public parking lot, but we do need to let who. Who's using the parking lot know that it's going to be under commission for a little while. Other than that, business as usual.
Um, question, speaking of the facade program itself, what? Is that going to impact RagBri in any way?
Um, no, they've had those conversations and they're gonna try and make sure that we're working kind of around that period of time. So what we can get done will be done before then.
Okay.
Um, mainly, I think we're gonna have just the material staged. And then most of the construction will probably happen after. But yeah, it's um, we are currently getting the property owner signatures and their um payment plans have been set up by Derek, so. I'm just kind of waiting for a few more people to come in to sign documents. After that's done, we'll be moving along.
On on that, do they normally just, I don't know, for lack of, I don't know how to go about it, but on the facades, like, say there's Tuck Point, they go along and do. Knockout, start with one building, go down the line, or do they kind of do one building, start to finish before they move on?
Um. Good question, depends on the contractor. So they, one contractor has the bid for all the facade projects. So it'll depend on how they want to stage the, I mean, they bid on it, they'll have their own plan of attack.
I just didn't know if hypothetically they'd have ten storefronts, you know, with construction stuff out front, or if they'd kind of chunk it off or. But it's up to them.
Yeah, right now they are going to stage out of one area for all ten projects. So, um, so yeah, they'll, I'm not sure, I don't, they don't necessarily have to share their plan with us, I do know that there's, um. I believe six contractors or subcontractors involved. Um, we've done all the paperwork for like tax exempt and all of that kind of stuff, so they should be good to go. And we do have the permits for them, so. Um, yeah, it's. I hope they do, I hope they do a lot of things all at once, I'd really like to see it going, so.
Any questions for Beth? Ten point zero, mayor and council's reports, ten point one, mayor's report. Uh, I'd like to reiterate my apologies to. The people in attendance, those virtual, the uh planning committee for RagBri and for the council. I put all of you in a very unfavorable position tonight. Uh, I need to work on. Making sure that that is not a terrible beginning. With that. The hometown pride group. A very, very good evaporation of mines, people. We work to be spearheading an extension of the city council's hand on this. Uh, the God Bless America sculpture that we've talked about tonight, in depth. Uh, Shannon Appleby has finished up a a video, I just, I wish I knew where that could be located. Casey, could you help me out here and let me let us know where that could be viewed?
Yeah, we have a a Facebook page and it's right on there, it's called God. Yeah, God Bless America sculpture, if you just Google that, it'll come up.
So those of you that have interest, uh, please look at that. Uh, it, that video did launch at the uh Valentine's supper back in February. Also.
And and, oh, by the way, Rod's a star in it.
That's not why I'm telling you to. You can. Cut it off right to the real last speaker.
You said, excuse me for buttoning, but you said God Bless America, what? Sculpture? I want to get that out.
Another item I'd like to inform on is uh the Watsi Trail, uh final cost estimates are done. Uh, construction should start late summer, uh if all goes well, late summer of twenty twenty one. Again, Watsi Trail, it's just what a great connectivity to uh town. I wish it had a complete loop around the perimeter of the entire community. But that is something that we will work on in the future. But I can't, I can't say enough for the group, the fundraising group, did a bang out job to come up with that kind of money in two phases. Finally, I spoke last meeting of the positivity animals Facebook page. Uh, in speaking with uh Lisa McQuillan and Jackie Snyder, who are, I guess, we would say are the administrators of that. They are would be looking for any type of council comments to post on there. Again, it's positive comments only, not that the council has ever has anything negative to say. But uh if you would like to place a document out there for viewing. Please reach out to Lisa McQuillan or Jackie Snyder. That is it for the mayor's report. Ten point two, council reports.
Now, emergency management, at least they're getting more shots now, they got, that was last week, what, five hundred Johnson and Johnson? And then there is, will be some COVID money coming over seven hundred thousand to help for the city of Anamosa to help. Pay for different things related with that and everything, so. That's there, and then the nine one one, they're still working. Get a better hookup, to hook a generator up there at the courthouse in case of a big. Power outage, if they can get that one brought in and hooked up quick to, so they don't lose services.
Thanks, John. Any other council reports? Uh, I I do want to, being John has mentioned that. Uh, several meetings ago, the infamous uh Jeff Swisher came before us and in uh told us how smooth running. The whole uh shot distribution was at the Lawrence and. Uh, I did partake in that. And uh I would attest that what somebody did a lot of planning. To make the, what what a smooth transition in the door down. So if any of you haven't been down there or do not plan to receive the shot. Maybe just go down and take a look, oh. An assembly line, I guess you could say. Uh, works so smoothly. Eleven point zero, public comment, the item's not on the agenda. I will start with those in-house, if you have anything you would like to bring before the council, just please keep in mind if you do. That the council cannot make any decisions on what you're, I guess, presenting. There's none in the house, Rebecca, is there any one virtually that would like to address the council?
There is not.
Very well. Eleven point zero in German.
So moved.
Second.
Is that John, let me the motion?
Yes.
Second by Alan. All those in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Both may, motion carried unanimously, thanks everyone for taking your time out of us, very busy schedule to be on the channel.